We'll call this meeting to order. We'll have a presentation by Bruce Riddle, who's our city administrator and financial director. So Bruce, if you'll go through this.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll run through a quick, hopefully quick, presentation. Much of this information, I think, is information that the city council's been exposed to already, but particularly for the benefit of the public that's here tonight, as well as public that may be joining online. I'll try to run through some high-level points that relate to this hearing. The truth in taxation hearing that we're here for tonight is necessitated as a result of state law that requires us to hold the hearing if the proposed certified tax rate that the city requests through the county is higher than what was set originally by the county. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second, but all that's driven by some budget issues that the council's considered for months now, starting back in January with the initial strategy meeting that the council held, along with follow-up strategy meetings and consideration on adoption of the tentative budget, and then finally an adoption of a budget that is effectively tentative, that was effective July 1st, until this meeting could be held in August, which is part of state law. Property tax of the 150 or so sources of revenue in the general fund is the second largest and accounts for about 11% of the total general fund revenue. We'll talk a little bit more about this next point here in just a second, but inflation has really eroded the buying power of property tax dollars over time. And we continue to see inflationary pressures on our labor market, on material and supply costs, and thus really stressing the city's ability to maintain the service levels that we've grown accustomed to. The property tax increase that's proposed in the budget that we're currently operating under, that's under consideration tonight, would generate an additional $800, or $118,000 in the fiscal 2025 budget that became effective July 1st. By way of strategy and maybe not formal policy, but at least in terms of strategy, the city has been moving over a number of years to make small inflationary adjustments on a regular basis, as opposed to deferring those increases in the face of inflationary pressures, and then having to come back later and make larger increases that tend to be even less popular than small increases. And tonight's discussion really centers around that same concept. We've been doing that same thing on utility rates for quite a few years, and it's not to say that those are not impactful, but it's certainly easier to make small adjustments every year than try to make big double-digit increases in any given year when they come up. Stepping back from sort of a high level and to talk more specifically about property tax, as it relates to property owners here in the city, if you get your property tax notice from the county and inspect that at all, one of the first things you'll probably notice is that there are multiple entities that have statutory rights to levy taxes on property. So your total property tax bill in Springville, and it really depends on where you live in Springville, because there are some special districts that touch parts of the city and not other parts of the city. But for most citizens in the city, the county has a piece, the city has a piece, special service districts have a piece. There's also some administrative fees that are charged by both the county and the state, and then the school district has a piece. Probably one of the most misunderstood things about property tax is the property tax revenue that is generated from the levy on any of these entities remains constant over time. It does not adjust for inflation. And so if the city, for example, were to charge $100,000 in property tax revenue this year, next year, they can only charge or generate $100,000 in revenue. I've got a couple other slides that sort of speak to that point. But in state law, and I think it was enacted in the mid-'80s, the Truth in Taxation Act was implemented, which requires entities to go through this process that we're doing here tonight, anytime that we propose property tax revenue that's beyond what the initial certified rate from the county was. This is just sort of a graphic presentation of the entities that I talked about here on the last slide. So to put things into perspective, when you look at your total property tax bill, about 76% of that goes to Nebo School District. The remaining 24% or so is divided among the other components that you see here. About 7% go into the county, 4% go into Central Utah Water Conservancy District. There's about 1% that goes to both county and state assessing and collecting activities, and 12% of the total property tax bill is Springville City's portion. What we're talking about tonight is a property tax increase on only that 12%. If any of these other entities are raising their property tax rate, they would be required to have a similar meeting that we're having right now. This is sort of back to the concept of property tax not adjusting for inflation, and this is math, and I won't spend much time on this unless you want me to spend more time on it, but it's an attempt to try to display, from the city's perspective, how property tax revenue is generated and calculated. So the city has property tax revenue that is budgeted. You can see my cursor there here in the numerator of this equation, and that numerator is divided by the total taxable value of properties in the city. And the properties in the city are really divided into two classes, residential and commercial. On the residential side, the residential property value, the fair market value, is discounted by 45%. So only 55% of the property's value is taxed from the fair market value. On the commercial side, however, the full fair market value is taxed at the rate that's calculated here. So the point being, if we were to generate $100,000 in sales tax revenue, the way we get to the property tax rate is to divide that $100,000 in revenue by the total taxable value. In this hypothetical situation, I'm saying if the total taxable value in the city was $100 million, then the property tax would be 0.1% or 0.001 if you're expressing it in a rate, from a rate perspective. In the next year, what the county does is assess all the properties and go through the exact same process, but they'll change generally the values as the assessor does analysis throughout all the cities, and property values will either go up or they will go down. But statutorily, the city can only generate the same amount of revenue that they generated in the previous year, unless we want to go through this process of truth in taxation. The point with this graphic is if values go up, it's a common misconception that people's property taxes go up. But what actually happens is the rate goes down. So we're generating the same amount of revenue, $100,000. The values are now $10 million higher, so the rate has gone down from 0.001 to 0.000909. This graph kind of tells much the same story, and it's a little bit complicated, but I'll try to walk you through it. There's effectively an inverse relationship between the value of homes and the property tax rate that's charged against the value of those homes. The black line that runs through the center of this chart represents Utah home prices over the span of about 20 years. And you can see in the mid-2000s, home prices were rising quite a bit. This big blue bar that's in the center of the graph represents the Great Recession, and property values dropped, lingered there for a while, then started working their way back up, and then as we kind of got into the 2020s, all of a sudden, with Utah's economy and big upturns there, property values have gone up significantly. The blue line that's on top there represents the property tax rate that we've levied against the values of those homes, and you can see that that rate has actually been going down. So as property taxes have gone up, the property tax rate goes down, resulting in level revenue for the city. Now, the only thing that really changes there is new growth. So as new homes are built and new people pay property taxes, the city does see the benefit of those new properties that are developed in the city, so property tax revenue does ultimately increase as a result of growth. This next chart is really the key one that I wanted to focus on here. I've gone back and to try to graphically dis- display in a different way, kind of the same concept. This gray line that runs through the center represents the concept that the revenue generated from property tax remains the same for the city if we don't intentionally increase it. And so if we go back to 1999, you can see property tax revenue in the city was about just a little over $1 million. And if we make the assumption that there's no new growth, that number would stay level all the way through. The blue line, what I've done is applied inflation to that original number from 1999, and you can see how those same costs over time have increased. So the blue line really affects the cost of us delivering services. If you assume we had a balanced budget in 1999, we used property tax to pay for police and fire and library and parks and recreation, and that budget was balanced, we were in an okay position. But over time, the costs of providing those services have gone up with inflation, but the revenue that supports those services has stayed the same. That gap between the two is this checked area, and over the course of about 24 years, that equals about $9.2 million of a dollar gap that has emerged as we've not increased property tax to keep pace with inflation. We did go through truth in taxation last year. We increased property tax a little over 4%, and this year's proposal is 3.5%. The next point I want to make about property tax is just the fact that it's divided into two components. There are general operations, which support the general operations of the city, and that's represented by the blue bar here. And then anytime that the city goes through a general obligation bond election, and we've done that twice in the last 15 years, once for the library and once for the CRC, the Recreation Center. If the bond election is passed and the initiative is successful, then the debt service payments, which are guaranteed by property taxes, get assessed to the property tax bill. So what we're focusing on here tonight is the blue bar and the general operations component of the property tax bill. The gray portion, which is the debt service portion, remains constant until the debt is retired, or those bonds mature, and then that portion of the property tax will go away. Let's just run through a very quick example. I won't hit all these numbers, but basically, the average home, according to the county assessor in 2024 tax year, is $462,000. Again, that value is discounted by 45%, so the taxable value is $254,000. And if we did not do a tax increase, we would assess the $254,000 at the tax rate here, the 0.00748, which would be $190. The portion that goes to the debt service on the library and the CRC is $86.90, resulting in a total tax bill of $276.97. With the proposed increase, we would increase the levy from the 0.00748 to 0.00786, and that would generate a bill of $199.72. The debt service portion stays the same, so the total property tax bill on the average residential home in Springville would increase to $286.62, which is a difference of $9.65 for the year, and that's the 3.5% increase that we talked about. This is the exact same example with a business valued at the same amount. The only difference is that the business valuation is not discounted, so the taxable value is the full fair market value. So you'd see that would result in a business increase of $17.55 for the year. This is a tax rate comparison. I actually pulled this from Provo City's budget document, and this is 2023 numbers. You can see where we are. The left-hand side graph, general operations rate, that's the portion we're talking about increasing. And as you can see, the cities they compared, many Utah County cities and a handful of Salt Lake County cities, and you can see that Springville is well towards the low end of general operations tax rates. The rate on the side, the graph on the side, represents the total tax rate, so this folds in the debt service portion of tax rate as well. And so that does increase the amount of tax that the city charges to service those debts, but still keeps us below the midpoint. The red-lined, or red-underlined cities that you see there are proposing to raise taxes for 2024, so you can see there's probably a half dozen or more cities in this comparison. And I think there's a couple other Utah County cities that aren't on this list that are planning or proposing to raise property taxes this year. This last slide is just a kind of calendar of the process that we go through that's really dictated by state law. So we've really had this discussion since, at least in terms of formal action with the adoption of, starting with the adoption of the tentative budget back in May. We've gone through the necessary notifications, and tonight's the public hearing, which is required by state law. That's really the extent of my presentation, unless you've got questions about that.
Bruce, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned service levels.
Yes.
Can you explain for the benefit of those that are here and maybe listening online, what service level actually means and how that relates to the revenue that the city gets out of property tax?
Yeah, sure. So service level really refers to the standard or level of services that the city provides. So for example, we may, and I'm kind of making these numbers up, but we employ X number, one police officer for every, let's say, 1,000 people. And so as the city grows, if we add another 1,000 people of population, we would add another police officer to help accommodate that growth. Similar things would happen, for example, on the recreation side. We provide an array of programming, and as the city grows, we have to add staffing and personnel to accommodate more programs in order to provide the same rough number of programs offered to the population as the city grows. Another example of service level might be response time from the fire department. We try to meet a certain service level there that's somewhere in the ballpark of eight minutes from the time the call comes in. And we try to maintain that service level. In order to do that, we've got to have appropriate staffing in the fire department in order to meet that response time. As property taxes don't increase because of inflation, but I still have to pay firefighters, for example, more money because in order for us to stay competitive in the labor market, I have to make inflationary increases to their salary, the city's ability to maintain that service level, the affordability of maintaining that service level is compromised because my tax dollars aren't growing at the same rate that the cost of providing those services is growing.
And so if we cut service levels, then we could cut property tax?
We cut service levels, we could cut property tax, yes.
Anything else? Questions for Bruce? You know, I just, I brought my tax notice that I got from the county, and interestingly enough, last year, when it was proposed that we would increase our property taxes, this is to your point. We anticipated that it would raise my property taxes by about $17 for the whole year. My property taxes actually went down $16 because of just the factor that you're talking about, you know? And this year, my property taxes are proposed to go up $20.63, so feasibly, could it be going down again?
It is possible, and it's frustrating for someone who's very focused on numbers and accuracy and multiple decimal points to try to have to explain why that is for a given individual, but it's some of the reality of having a host of differently valued properties within the city, how the county assesses those, on what schedule they assess those, and also factoring in the growth component, which is difficult to do. Kind of went back to this slide because I forgot to mention one thing. If you look at this gray line at the very bottom, that represents the property tax portion that is associated with debt. And you can see back in 2010 is when we issued the library bonds, so the rate went way up. And then you see the line starts going down. Well, why is that? It's because people have been building new houses in the city. The debt stays fixed, but we're now sharing that debt with more people as growth comes along. So your bill goes down as a new homeowner builds a house and starts paying their share of the bill at the library, and the same thing happens with the CRC. And then the important part about that bottom gray line is, I've noted the dates on there, but the the bonds associated with the library mature, meaning they'll be paid off in 2031, and that portion of the property tax bill will go away altogether. That was part of the bond election, that we would service the debt for the life of the debt, and then the debt goes, and the associated property tax goes away. And the same thing with the CRC, although it matures five years later in 2036. So we're approaching a time when we'll see a big drop in property tax rates as those debts roll off.
Yeah, and for the layperson, I mean, this is very confusing to understand. And we didn't set it up. I mean, it wasn't anything the city did. This was set up by state statute or county statute?
It's state statute. Much of the property tax work is actually administered by the county. The county does the assessing. They do all the calculating of the certified rate, although there is oversight from the state to certify the rates once they've been entered by the county after we've done the work we're doing right now.
Yeah, but it's hard to explain to somebody your taxes are going to go up $17, and then they go down $16. I mean, it doesn't make sense to somebody who's trying to budget and figure out how things are supposed to work, so. Anyway, I know, I'm not shooting the messenger because there's other.
Go to that slide where you're showing the differences, because it showed the gray line staying constant, but what you're saying is that gray line's going to go down when you went to the actual payment, right? Next slide. Right there. So that $86.90 really has a great likelihood of going down, right? If I understand that? And yeah, and by 2036, I think, it's gone.
Yeah, well, this number, the 8690, just applies to this one hypothetical situation. That's the calculation for a home that's valued at $462,000. If your home's valued at $300,000 or $700,000, your number is going to be different.
Yeah, so that 8690.
This slide actually represents that a little bit better. So if you look at the gray portion here, and if you just look at the gray portion, you don't see much difference, but look at the numbers. You can see, just over the course of three years, we've gone from 391 down to 363, down to 342. That's, as new homes have been built, they're sharing a portion, so everybody's is going down a little bit.
Actually, that I.
That will actually offset a portion of what you're raising here.
Well, and the beauty is, is that when the bond, because a lot of people say, oh, you're going to raise your taxes and you'll never lower them, but the way we set up those bonds, which none of us really were, you might have been here for part of it, but they go away, meaning when the library's paid for, we don't pay for it anymore.
Yeah, they're actually separate line items, not on your tax bill, but actually, maybe they are on your tax bill. I'm trying to think.
No.
No, they're combined. On the system, when I put them in, they're separate lines. So when I enter the rates in the state's system, one line is for debt service, the other line is for general operations. They're quite distinct. And I have to provide substantiation every year for what the debt service is, so there's good oversight on that.
Okay, other questions for Bruce? Okay, very good. We'll now enter the public portion, where the public hearing. This is, any citizen can stand up, and all we ask you to do, and I've had three papers that were given to me, and I appreciate this, I really do, but if you'll just state your name and your address here in the city, where you're located at, and you're welcome to take three minutes, if that's okay. We're here to listen to what you have to say, and the three people that I have here, again, you're welcome to come up. Steve, is it Watrous? Okay, and Sandra, I assume you're related, and then Ellen Brown. But again, anyone can stand up who has not filled out one of these forms, so please come forward, anyone. Ladies first.
Okay, I was told I had four minutes, so if I go for three, I hope that's all right.
You can have four. Your husband can have three.
Okay, my name is Sandra Watrous. I live, we live at 446 East 200 North, and we have lived in Springville for about 35 years, and we have very much enjoyed living here. This is a special place. To begin my comments, I briefly mention our inspired U.S. Constitution. We and our children need to know and live by its truths and principles to preserve our liberties. I would like to pose a question to you, city council members, and any one of you can answer it. According to our constitution, who is sovereign?
Okay, this is an opportunity for you to give us a statement.
Okay.
Not a dialogue, sorry.
All right, well, I will answer the question.
Okay.
Well, we, the people, are sovereign. All right? This God-given document firmly establishes the fact that we, the people, are sovereign. The dictionary defines sovereign as supreme in power. This means that those people who are elected to serve in federal, state, and city government positions are at the bidding of we, the people, who are sovereign. This brings us to our local government here in Springville. Thank you for allowing us, we, the people, to express to you our concerns regarding our governance through the policies that you make as our elected leaders and the policies that should promote the general welfare as stated in the preamble of the Constitution. I would like now to briefly state to you elected Springville leaders some real concerns that I feel about this job of promoting the general welfare of the citizens of Springville. We are most concerned that our federal government is making some very poor fiscal decisions. The gold standard was abandoned in 1971 under President Nixon. Today, billions of dollars are being printed with nothing to secure their value, and high inflation has been one of its awful consequences. Many citizens are truly suffering under these policies. We agree that in order for you to promote the general welfare, we, as citizens, need to pay our share of taxes to cover the cost of basic services. However, we are being overwhelmed with taxes that have been increasing every year on all levels. Here in Springville, we are also concerned that the continual rise in our city taxes is happening year after year. You, our city leaders, in Springville, have presented a budget for next year regarding the spending of our tax money. Balancing a budget is extremely important. Have each of you thoroughly studied this proposed budget, 130 or so pages, I'm not sure? But do you understand and agree with it? While so many are struggling to keep a roof over their head and food on their table, let alone the ability to purchase a home, why are we being further disadvantaged with this increase in taxes recommended in the proposed city budget of 2025? All of us are suffering, including the many older retired people living on a fixed income, who are fearful of losing their homes they have purchased and paid for because city, state, property, and federal taxes have become so high. Yes, high inflation is the fallback answer to higher taxes, but at times of high inflation, some adjustments must be made and extras eliminated. This is called fiscal responsibility and honesty, and it requires sacrifice. As responsible people, we tighten our belt at such times and go without. We, the people, expect our city leaders to do the same. We ask you, our respected Mayor Packard and our city council members, are you listening? I think we want to first of all thank you for hearing our concerns, and I- and I feel I represent many other people who feel the same way about taxes. We will continue to follow closely your decisions, and we hope, we will, we, and we hope that your decisions will represent we, the people, who are sovereign in following our constitution as you have all promised to do. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, Stephen, see if you can top that performance.
I may ask for four minutes, because I found out this last month. Having grown up in central New York, I am a fourth cousin to Noah Packard and Aaron Johnson.
There you go. Well, there's a blend right.
I feel like I'm one of you.
Yes, you are, that's for sure. That means you're my cousin. It's great.
Well, as I've been studying our founding documents, I've come to understand the need to learn the intent of the founding fathers. A couple of the pertinent quotes from the founding fathers. First, from the Declaration of Independence. Governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. And then I quote from the Constitution itself, actually, the Constitutional Convention, Benjamin Franklin. In free governments, the rulers are the servants and the people, their superiors and sovereigns. In short, the American people are sovereign, we, the people. We are the people. Each member of the city council took an oath of the office, saying, "I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity." We, the people, are concerned about tax increases that have occurred in recent years. Some of you, perhaps all of you, ran for office with a promise to lower taxes and/or to demonstrate fiscal responsibility. So one aspect of the portion, of Springville's portion of the property tax is Springville's budget. And so we question salary increases for elected and unelected city officials while we, the people, are struggling with the effects of government-caused inflation. We cannot give ourselves a pay raise as the people. When funds, in a household, when funds for expenditures are limited, we tighten our belts or go without, as was mentioned. Inflation has required the rank and file of we, the people, to decrease expenditures. Our hope is that our city can find a proper way to likewise decrease its expenditures. So I took a look at the full-time department salaries. We, the people, take exception to the five percent salary increase for 2025 in the Administration Services Department and to the five-point-four percent salary increase in the Legal Department. We believe it's reasonable for salary increases in those two departments to be held at their fiscal 2024 approved levels, meaning there would be no salary increases in fiscal year 2025 for those two departments. Taking this sort of an action publicly would convey a message to the community that community leaders of the city staff at this high administrative level share the concerns of the people and are willing to make this sacrifice as a demonstration of their desire to cut city expenditures. So I close with this. If you ran for office with a promise to lower taxes, to be fiscally responsible, to listen to, and to be accountable to your fellow citizens, then we, the people, expect you to stand firm for those commitments in your elected role as our representative, in effect, as an employee of us, as it were, we, the people. Now, unelected city employees may see the subject of lowering expenses differently from you. Other council members may try to influence you to see this or other issues their way, but you are not beholden to them. We, the people, are the sovereign. We, the people, urge you to cast your votes in this council in accordance with the Constitution. And that is to say, in accordance with the will of the people, lowering taxes and being fiscally responsible. I just want to thank the city for the fine and diligent work that we see happening all around, in our roads, water, electricity, everywhere. But we're the people, and we thank you for your integrity in serving us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ellen Brown, and then it's really open to anybody who'd like to come and speak. Don't be nervous. Take a deep breath. It's good.
This evening, as I was preparing to come to this meeting, the thought came to me of representation, which must have been an inspired thought, because all three of us are feeling the same thing. And I don't know how, you know, I'm a highly religious person, and so I feel that this spirit guides me in things. But, and so as I thought about our federal government and how unrepresented, represented I feel in all aspects of it, I was gerrymandered out of a district that, of somebody who I felt confident about, and gerrymandered into someone that I didn't feel confident about, and so I feel unrepresented. In the county district, in the state, I see constant, you know, bickering and, and, you know, just, I don't feel really represented there either. And then in the county, I went to their truth and taxation, and at least they're giving some time for a comment. I'm hoping that you will too, and are not just voting today, but if you are voting today, I hope that you listen with your hearts rather than your head to the feelings that are voiced, that this constant dripping, although we get used to the dripping, it's just constantly there, and I don't want to get used to the constant drip, to the constant trickle of everything, just, you know, everybody is just asking for more and for more, and we don't have more to give. We, a lot of people, I mean, at the county meeting, there were so many people there talking about that they're on a fixed income. And there are so many people in this community that are on a fixed income and just can't afford the nine dollars, you know? That's taking bread out of their bucket, you know, for a couple of months. And so you do need to just, please, think about where you can tighten your belts. And that if it has to come from you individually, then allow it to come from you individually, that you take the hit, and that we, the people, aren't burdened as much. You know, you say that, you say that the, those bonds for the library and the recreation center will go down, yes, but there's going to be another one, you just know it, that will bring it back up, and we'll be sliding, you know, we'll be just doing this all over again. And so please be mindful of those who really can't afford this, and that they would appreciate your hearts in this subject, and, um, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to come up and share your thoughts? Please don't be bashful at all. We're welcome. Some thoughts, if you have them. I knew you were coming up. I could see you were sitting on the edge of your chair, so come on up. Thank you for doing it.
I don't really have a comment. My name is Lindsay Passmore. I live at nine-two-nine South Spring Canyon Way. And I want to make sure I understand this, because I don't know that I've got it right. If two hundred new homes are built, then you have an incremental, you have an increase in the property taxes collected. Are you saying that others will go down because you've got an increase from new homes? No, okay, I had that wrong. The part that, the part that goes to the city of Springville?
The operations part. The city receives the additional property tax that the new growth would pay towards the general operations portion of the property tax. The portion that goes to debt stays constant, so that amount will go down for everyone because you've got, why do you have the same amount but more?
So you said that the city of Springville, twelve percent of property taxes goes to the city?
Approximately, yes.
So this tax proposal that you have, one hundred percent of this increase would come to the city? Or does it go to some of these other?
We're only talking tonight about the city's portion, which is twelve percent of your total tax bill, but all of the increase that we're talking about tonight comes to Springville City, not to any of the other entities.
But those two hundred new homes, that property tax collected, is it, does it get allocated out based on the percentages that you talked about?
Yeah, if a new, if a new home's built in the city, they pay the same rate that exists at the time their bill comes due from whatever entity has taxing authority over them.
But that increase in dollars, where does it go? Does any of that come to the city?
The city portion would come to the city, yes.
Okay, so that's in the twelve percent. And this is a little bit off, but I'm curious what percentage of the sales tax that is created in Springville goes to Springville?
If you thought property tax was confusing, we can talk about it. It's actually a little bit easier, but.
No, no, this is, this is good for you to know, so just hang with us and let him explain sales tax, because this is not commonly known, so go ahead.
Yeah, and we'll give the simplified answer, and we can go as detailed as we want, but one percent of your, of the purchase goes to local government. So if you spend a hundred dollars at Walmart, one dollar goes to the local government. So that's about a seventh, a little less than a seventh, actually.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that just.
I mean, I mean, it's.
How does a city ever increase to allow for inflation and growth?
Right. That's their challenge.
We need more firemen, I think, and I think we need more policemen. And a look at the city of generating new sales tax, but if you get some new businesses out here, you're saying we don't, most of it goes someplace else?
Absolutely, yeah.
And is that a state law, a county? Oh, I'm asking some big questions.
You're asking questions, and I told somebody this was kind of a statement rather than a dialogue, so. No, you're totally okay.
I wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Yep, yep, you're okay, you're okay. Yep, you bet, you bet. She brings up an interesting point, is that some time ago, we knew we had to provide, we wanted to provide paramedics twenty-four-seven. And I'm going to get this number wrong, but that was a one-point-two-million-dollar decision, and this group had to wrestle with, where in the world does that come from? You know, you just don't print the money. And so we wrestled very long and hard about it, so it was not an easy decision. We do have paramedics twenty-four-seven. And I'm speaking personally, is that police and fire are the most important things we can have in town, because it provides security and safety. If you don't have that, you don't have anything. So we've worked very diligently to try to be very fiscally sound and responsible in responding to those kinds of things. There's a tremendous amount of wage pressure on those items, and understandably so, that's where the market is. And you either stay with it or you don't stay with it, and you have to stay with it. If not, you lose everybody. So these are the kind of things that we end up wrestling with. And so you sit and balance these things in relationship to, for me, you know, I'm looking at twenty dollars and thirteen, seventeen, sixty-three cents as opposed to wrestling with some of those and being able to balance it, and I'm willing to do that. Now, that's me, and I may have the twenty dollars and sixty-three cents, and someone else may not. But don't lump fiscal, national issues with local issues. We don't have the power to print. We don't have the power to manage the money supply. We just have what we have given to us, and we have to manage that. There's lots of sources of income, but most sources of income to the city are quite small, and we have to manage those, and we have to not only manage them, we have to justify them. We have to explain why we do it. There's a state law that says we have to validate it. So it's quite an interesting process. The last thing I'm going to say is, what's happening tonight is the climax of about, correct me if I'm wrong, seven months of discussions that all of you have the opportunity to be a part of. These process, this process will start again in January, which will have a little retreat. Public is always welcome to these meetings, or public meetings. Come, put your input into it. It's critical and important. I had the chance to meet with a citizens' group last night, twenty, twenty-five citizens on the north end of town, and my comment to them, because they asked, how can we get involved? And I said, here's how you get involved. We want you to be involved. We want your input. Because, okay, I'll speak for myself. I don't know everything. I need to hear. But when you share your thoughts, you need to know that you're not going to be right all the time, and I'm not going to be all right, okay, and I'm okay with that, and you have to be okay with that. We live in a society where if you don't believe what I believe, you're evil. That is not the way this world works. You cannot do that. I had a gentleman come in. He and I sat down in my office. He and I were so diametrically opposed on some issues in the town, but we left friends. I saw him the other day, and he was happy to see him, and I was happy to see him. You have to be able to accept the fact. You do the best you can. You speak about the founding fathers. I study a lot about the founding fathers. I've read a lot about George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, and you don't think we have issues. They had tremendous issues. You don't think they had disagreements in the Constitutional Convention? I mean, they had violent conversations, violent conversations. But at the end of the day, they sat down and figured out how to make it work. And so we have to be different than what we hear a lot out in the media and the circumstances, and just realize that we have to figure it out, because no one else is going to figure it out. No one else cares for Springville but us. So I encourage you to get a part of the process. You see this truth and taxation process, first meetings in May, but the planning of it, the discussion of it, happens long before them in January. Again, look at the website. I just encourage you to be a part of it. Call me, call the city, and find out when those meetings are, and come down. We want to hear from you. Because this group, we do this because we love Springville, and if you don't like what we do, there's an election. I guess you could impeach me. But my point is, get involved. We want you to be involved, but do it in the spirit of trying to figure out what to do and how to do it the right way. Okay, I've said enough, but.
Well, I was just going to continue that plug. The general plan process just started last week, and online are opportunities for public input immediately in terms of survey and open-ended questions for input on what you want to see the city to develop at over the next twenty years. So if you don't want to wait till January, do it today.
Yeah, and this, we're talking about fiscal kinds of things, but that's the look and the feel of Springville. What do you want it to look like in twenty and thirty years? You know, if you don't decide today, it will look and feel like something, but it may not be what you want. So that's the process. Come down and be a part of this process, and we love it. We absolutely love it. We need it. I'll put it bluntly that way. We need that kind of input. But again, come with the right spirit. Just give everything you got, and I may look at you and say, you know, I don't agree with anything you've said. And it's okay. You can look back at me and say, I don't agree with you, Mayor. I'm okay with that. Because what we're trying to do at the end of the day is figure out what is right. And we have those kind of discussions on the council. I mean, this guy to my left, how many times have I told him, you know, you're crazy, Craig, you're absolutely nuts? And he says the same thing to me. I had a city council, who's still here, look at me one day, and he says, you're an idiot. And I said, I probably am, and I'm okay with that. We're okay with it, because there's nothing personal here. You have to have that same approach, and I encourage you to make it a part of that same approach. So enough said, but anyway, be a part of this whole thing, so. Okay, others who want to say something, now that I've spouted off, sorry. There we go. Thank you.
Lisa Willey, sixty-one South, nine-fifty East. Thank you, Bruce, for explaining it succinctly and clearly, and for the others that have given their comments. I appreciate those as well. I was pleased when I found. I was pleased when I found out that the tax increase was going to be $10 for the year. I, I came with gloom and doom, wondering, "Oh, what's it gonna be?" And that's something that in, in my home, I can manage. Probably there are others that can manage it as well, and I hope that most of us can. My other thought was, in our, in our home, we have, we have a, we, we call them buckets. And there's a bucket for this, and a bucket for food, and a bucket for gas, and a bucket for, for charitable donations. And is there, is there a hardship bucket at Springville City that if there are residents that are able and willing and want to contribute to the, the hardship fund in case people need to apply for that, if that's something and it's made known, then that may be a fix and a solution for, for some residents on both sides? Just a thought.
You want to look my way. The, no, is the short answer. There are several, several options there. We've got a hardship fund that's run through the county for utilities. Also, through the county, there's a process to challenge evaluation, which can lower your property tax value. But currently, we don't have an internal fund that would do that.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
For taxes. Well, for utilities, it's managed now by the county.
The county administers the heat program. You can donate to the county's program in the name of Springville, and it'll be allocated to Springville residents. But that's for utility fees, nothing that I'm aware of on the property tax side.
Okay, other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, the, the item on the agenda is for the property tax increase, and so I'll entertain a motion either for approval or for nonapproval.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2024 through 25, adopting the certified tax rate of 0.001128, compromised of a tax rate of 0.000786 for general operations of the city, and a tax rate of 0.000342 for interest and sinking fund slash bond purposes, to be levied on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Springville City in order to support the tax revenue in the General Fund and Debt Service Fund.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Logan?
Aye.
Craig?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Jake?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe in my situation, like yours, you may find that your property taxes actually go down because of all this complication, but the proposal is to make it, to have a property tax increase. Now, I know I'm gonna get in trouble for saying this, but I'm not really a politician, but you have to have, as we've been talking, you have to have revenues to be able to fund these fire and police and do these kinds of things. And there's a tremendous amount of effort that goes into the market salaries, and you ought to get involved with that. This gentleman right here, that's all he does, is do the market evaluation. Why do we give somebody 5%? Why do we give somebody 2%? You can, you can get involved in that sort of thing, because there's a grid, there's a schedule, it has to actually be approved in this budget that we're gonna look at, that you can look at, and you can, you can dissect it and talk with Pat Money about that, Patrick Money about it. So it would help you be able to at least get context for what it is. You may not agree with it, but at least it'll give you some context to it and help you understand it. So there's hopefully logic behind all this stuff that we go through. What I was gonna say is this, it's my personal opinion that there has to be a gentle increase in things over time. I just, I just get so violently upset at people, and if you, I've, I've looked at the tax increases that are going through this state, and some of them are going 60%. And I'm like, "Where have you been to all of a sudden slam somebody with 60% increase?" I just think it's easier to do inflationary adjustments over time, because we have to face the inflationary adjustments. Now, that's not locked in, because this January meeting that we have, as we talk about it, but my personal opinion is, is you have to have these revenues to be able to support these. If not, you end up cutting police, and you cut, end up cutting library people. And we look at that every year, but that's the balancing act that we do. So I just really appreciate the opinions of people, and you're welcome to disagree with me. It's okay. It's all right. And by the way, I got, I have no vote up here, so. Okay, sounds good. We will look then, Bruce, now, at the regular item in relationship to this budget.
I didn't prepare a separate presentation on this. This is really just finalizing or formalizing the finalization of the tentative budget that you adopted in June that is currently effective as of July 1. We're operating under tentative status, and this resolution would just make it final budget status.
Okay, so questions for Bruce? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for approval or disapproval of the budget.
I motion that we approve Resolution Number 2024-24, adopting a final budget for Springville City Corporation in the amount of $117,410,164 for expenditures and transfers in the 2025 fiscal year ending June 30, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's a roll call vote. Jake?
Yes.
Logan?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mindy?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other items that we need to talk about? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I motion that we end this meeting.
I'll second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you.